Oh six, thank you. Next up on the agenda is behavioral health, health, human services, White Earth PD, humanitarian assistance fund.
Thank you. Good morning. I don't think I ever get used to public speaking, so I kind of get shaky, but I won't pass out. I'll lean. So behavioral health has been at the table with homelessness and anytime we deal with any disparities, I think there's a lot of raw emotion behind it. So when we hear things, we kind of hang on to what we don't like to hear. Well, the team that we put together, we have a short-term, short-term solution and we're working on a long-term solution. So we gave this to the council, a proposal, and what we're hoping is that things will happen simultaneously. So it will start here, but I also have a team in Minneapolis to do it together, like we had talked at the urban council meeting on Saturday, and I really appreciate being invited to that. So here we go. With homelessness, there's all kinds of things that happen. We're dealing with people with CD issues, mental health issues, just a whole variety of things, and we put together a team with Clinton Alexander as well for harm reduction, Hart and Pat Butler, and there's Ben Bementes as well, so I'll have Dani just go ahead and go through the points of it.
Okay, so I'll just start with the urban strategic action plan, which reflects in the proposal. We're looking at our 224 West Franklin Mansion. With that, we'll have a drop-in day warming center up to occupancy of forty-nine people. Hours would be eight to four-thirty, a place for Native Americans to drop in and warm up. With that, there'll be on-demand supportive services provided, and due to the thirty-two to thirty-four percent of our population is affected with homelessness, we've also noticed that there's a rise in our elders becoming homeless as well. So we're going to bring that same strategic plan back to the reservation utilizing the Bagley Hotel, and it's our intent to provide on-demand supportive services with our behavioral health team. Also, you'll see in the proposal is a homelessness crisis response. This will provide the same on-demand services that exceeds capacity and our resources of local response and steps will be initiated through tribal leadership to activate an incident command system. And then I kind of wanted to talk about the budget that is also in there for the urban site specifically. In that budget, you'll see that it is built, it is built off from one hundred and nine encounters at our IHS encounter rate of four fifty-five and/or twenty-seven encounters a week. This is under the assumption that three hundred thousand dollars will be utilized from a one million dollar humanitarian fund to go towards this project. This budget also reflects a small loss, but encounters will drive revenue. This budget was made very frugally because this is the first time we've ever done anything like this.
Any questions?
I just want to point out that, so this, this allows for, to help our homelessness in the urban area and on the reservation, right?
Yes.
And this is specific for White Earth people only?
Yes. This is only using, this is culturally specific, only used in White Earth funds.
White Earth funds, because if we take funds from the state or we take funds from other entities, we have to allow other groups to come in, but if we utilize our own funds, then we can determine how, how those funds are utilized?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing that, question I have for you, so it looks like you're going to convert the urban, the urban mansions, the urban offices there for the drop-in day warming, right?
Yes.
And then the Bagley Hotel?
Yes.
Okay. And you are asking for a one million dollar humanitarian assistance fund, and this will, right now, operations, you estimate will cost about three hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Out of that, for both sites?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of this. Is there a resolution you guys got?
I believe it was attached.
Stand by. You got a resolution?
It was attached.
Oh, it was attached down there?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a resolution for it? Okay. I think we got some staff that want to make some comments.
Just one little concern is that I'm a little confused because I wasn't communicated with that you guys were going to go for the whole million dollars.
You guys, as in what do you mean?
Behavioral health was writing a resolution for one million dollars.
It's behavioral health funds.
I have a resolution on, on board here that I was asked to put together for a half a million dollars for the Bagley project and also to help out, assist with your project going on here, so I, just, just mentioning that because I do have a resolution on here for that.
To expand off from that, the budget for the urban site is estimated only utilizing three hundred thousand dollars out of that one million dollar humanitarian fund for specifically the urban site.
Like I said, I'm just confused a little bit because of the meeting that we had on Monday. I was asked to put forward a resolution.
So what I'm hearing is you have a five hundred thousand dollar resolution?
Yes, sir.
To help fund and support on reservation activities that would be pulled from this one million dollar humanitarian assistance fund. This is what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they're going to be utilizing three hundred thousand out of that million dollars to assist with homelessness in, in the urban area theoretically? Yes, that's what you guys are saying?
Yes.
So that's eight hundred thousand dollars, at least two hundred thousand dollars available of case there's anything else that comes up.
Yes, sir. I just wanted clarification on that.
So you have a, you have a resolution for urban?
Yes.
You have a resolution for on reservation?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like we've got all our bases covered.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like, also like to point out, Mr. Chair, that we've had longer-term discussions related to homelessness and, and we won't be, have those ideas presented until a later day, even if we don't pursue longer-term fixes for homelessness. I think this is a step in the right direction to take care of our members. Again, as the, as the gals were saying and as Ben was saying, we have anywhere upwards of thirty-three percent homelessness, and it's just not acceptable. And this is an issue that's been going on for years. We do have about twenty-four million dollars available, I think a million dollars out of twenty-four million dollars for this project is, is a, is a worthwhile investment to take care of our people. We do have our urban council that had passed a resolution for this, for this project. If, if I may, Mr. Chair, could we recognize them and have them read that to us? Yeah, if you guys could read that to that, us, that we had engaged with you and you guys felt that it was important that we address this on reservation and down in the urban area.
Butch, I'm Shar from the White Earth Urban Community Council. And we met on December tenth, when Ellen came down, and we talked about homelessness on the reservation and also in the metro area. And Ellen asked me to call a special meeting, which we did for Saturday, December fourteenth. And at that meeting, our council was there and also our RBC members were down there along with staff, and we had community members, I think we probably had about fifty people, I'm thinking. So within that meeting, the resolution that was drafted, Ellen read, and I'll read it. Well, I'd like to first of all introduce our members that came down here, our community council. Angie Big is co-chair, I'm chair, and Dawn is secretary. And we also have a great supporter, Nick Boswell-Wadina, who is willing to come on board with us, and later on, I'd like him to introduce himself and let you know what he has to offer. So the resolution reads, whereas, the White Earth Reservation Business Committee, RBC, is the duly-elected governing body of the White Earth Reservation pursuant to Article Six, Section One of the Revised Constitution of the Minnesota Chippewa Tribe, as amended and organized under Section Sixteen of the Act of June Eighteen, nineteen thirty-four, Forty-Eighth Statute, Nine Eighty-Four, and, whereas pursuant to Article Six, Section One E, the RBC may delegate to committees officers, employees, or cooperative associations, any of the foregoing authorities, reserving the right to review any action by virtue of such delegated authorities. And it has recognized the White Earth Urban Community Council as an Article Six, Section One E entity, and reserves the right to review and ratify any action taken by the entity, and, whereas, the issue of homelessness remains a crisis among indigenous populations in reservation communities as well as urban communities, and, whereas, the White Earth Urban Community Council met with several stakeholders, including White Earth Behavioral Health, Minneapolis American Indian Center, and the Red Lake Nation, to discuss the issue of homelessness of tribal members within the reservation as well as in urban areas. And whereas, the White Earth Urban Community Council continues its commitment to addressing homelessness of White Earth tribal members, and believes that immediate humanitarian assistance is needed to help combat and prevent homelessness among tribal members, where the humanitarian efforts will include providing shelters and warming facilities in the urban area. Now, therefore be it resolved that the White Earth Urban Community Council is requesting financial assistance from the RBC and others to, for overnight shelters and day warming facilities at White Earth Urban Offices, to immediately implement a humanitarian assistance plan to combat and prevent homelessness within the reservation and the urban area. We do therefore ratify the foregoing resolution was adopted by vote of, and it was three, four, zero against, one silent, a quorum being present at a special meeting of the White Earth Urban Community Council held on December fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And that was signed by Charlie Chairwoman and Dawn LaRocque Secretary. And I would like to add a little bit of history here. One Caucasian that is homeless, there are twenty-seven natives that are homeless. And this is data that was given yesterday when Peggy Flanagan and our governor, Tim Walz, was at the press conference, and that was held at the Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center where I work, and I work in the outpatient treatment center. Now, on a day-to-day basis, it's a life-or-death situation every day down in the metro, and I see it every day. When we open our doors in the morning, we have people that are waiting outside that when we open the doors, they ask if they can come in because they're cold and hungry. And we have people that have snuck into our building and we fighting, find them hiding in corners to come out the cold. We have an opiate crisis. All our staff is Narcan-trained, I'm Narcan-trained, and we have had our people that have dropped in front of our doors, and we bring them back. They start to turn dark and they stop breathing, and we hit them with Narcan and we bring them back. And we've also had women that are, have been in our buildings that have OD'd, and we've brought them back. So throughout the metro area, this is ongoing. Throughout the United States, this is ongoing, and here on our reservation, this is also ongoing, and this is an immediate crisis that we need to take care of. And temporary, I think this needs to be more than temporary, because our people are dying out there, and it's getting colder, and we need to bring them in. Migwich.
Hi. When I spoke earlier, I was coming from a community perspective and what I see, and I also want to just, I'm really excited about this so that our urban council, again, where we will be having more of a say in how we can help our people down in the cities, and I live right off of Twenty-third and Fourteenth Avenue, and every day I walk out there and what, what I see is just, I see a lot right off of my street where we have a lot of people walking, we have people who are shivering, and you can see, but when you start communicating with them, they're not just, numbers are statistics. These are people that are stuck wherever, they're stuck whether it be drugs or something else. So it's again, getting them off the streets, and I just wanted to also implement the importance because we have our women that are out on the streets all night. We have in my area a high traffic area, not only for drugs, not only for the homeless people, but for predators that come in looking for sex from our women. And it is not only pertain to our women nowadays, it is also pertain to our men. So it's almost like trying to wake up our community and say, yes, we need to start taking care of our people. We need to start helping them in some way, somehow. So I'm really grateful about this humanitarian monies and plan, and this plan, and I really wanted to share with the community up here that, again, and give you awareness of exactly why the urban area is asking for this type of help and how we collaborate with also our people up here. Again, it's about all of our nation, all of our people. And just to share a little bit too, and, how do I put this, because I want to break the stigma and yet not have people judging, but the thing is that I worry a lot about our women. I know a woman I always talk to on the streets, and she literally made it through the winter nights, but what I also notice is that the women, for what you would call survival sex, just so they can get out of the cold, and yet, we have another young woman that was in the news that was murdered, and there's just, you know, our women, we just need to take care of our families and, yeah, I just wanted to make that point, bring more awareness to the people up here exactly why it's so important that we collaborate and come together and start building a stronger nation. Does that mean I'm done? Wait. She has more.
Well, that was the bell. Sorry about that. No, just kidding. I mean, my name is Nick Boswell-Wadina. My father was Nick Boswell from Pansford. Maybe some of you know him, a Vietnam vet, Korean, went to Pipestone, and serving his people was his passion. He instilled this in me and expects me to do right, not for myself, not for anybody, but for the best of everyone else. And what I, I've seen coming around the meetings lately is with Ellen coming down, he's completely expressed that we need to attack homelessness here on the reservation as well as down in the cities. He has made this the utmost importance. Neither side can be forgotten. I've seen that there is a willingness now, due to what we saw on the wall, from city officials, from people who are native that are in government positions now, to make sure that this does continue to catch attention, and we have to grab this tiger by the tail right now. This is unprecedented, what we've been seeing. I feel personally, my, my background is in economics, finance, I've worked in financial sales my entire life, I understand business, I finished up the Masters of Leadership Program at Augsburg University, along with other native students, and giving back is, is my life's passion. What I think and I believe we all want is to, a long-term solution to this problem. And right now, I feel we are working with Band-Aids, temporary fixes, we're, we're trying to cover up the wound right now without, we have to figure out a plan to heal. Healing is going to involve creating opportunity for our people. I believe opportunity lies in education, I believe it relies on training and getting ready for what's coming here in the next a hundred years in this twenty-first century. I believe that our tribe can be a, at the forefront of training our people for what's coming around in the next fifty years. Technology, understanding it, having a firm grasp, we can be a beacon of, of, of how things could be for other tribes. We can lead the way, we should lead the way. I believe that blockchain technology, I believe that understanding AI and things that are coming down that a lot of us don't understand right now yet are things that we need to understand moving forward. And I believe that with what we're seeing with homelessness and what we're doing with the, with the opioid problem, we need to create light at the end of the tunnel for our people. There needs to be a goal, not just having a job where you work and let that be it. Something that inspires people's souls to get up every day and work beyond what they can expect themselves, what they expect themselves or see themselves doing. And I believe we can create those opportunities. I don't doubt that everyone here has a sincere care to see this move forward, but I understand we also have a lot of things to fix as far as procedures, checking, making sure things are done right, making sure all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed, getting federal funding, and this example of the HUD problem that we had can be fixed. We need just to have an extra set of eyes looking at these things as they're going through. The same thing with the attorneys, we need to be double and triple checking on what we have. We have the people, we have the heart, and we have the intelligence, and I, and I believe that we can move forward as a people. I will be here, I will be here moving forward and offer any assistance that I can, and working with the, we have leadership graduates from Augsburg that is the assistant to the mayor of Minneapolis. As we all know, Peggy Flanagan is lieutenant governor, and native issues at Augsburg University are becoming very, very well-known, and I plan on, on trying to grow that. And you guys can reach me anytime, I'm on Facebook, Nick Boswell-Wadina. I, I don't want to be on a board or I don't want to be in a position, I just want to help. So just if we have some ideas, we can get together and figure out how we can work together where there is, where we don't, when, we can all figure out what we're doing and know what we're doing at the same time, so we don't, so the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. Once we become an organized body, I believe we can be a lot more efficient and move forward. And with that, thank you for listening to me. Migwich.
Well, Migwich, guys, I appreciate your input, and, you know, as councils, you know, we, we've talked about this before too, about homelessness, you know, we, we're in a situation where we're, we're reactive, you know, then proactive, like, like we talked about. And I think that we're, you know, us meeting quite regularly on this, on this, and Raymond being the chair of the homeless, as I think that we have to, we have to plan better. And like, and we have, we, we've been doing certain things, we've been meeting with Adam Fairbanks, we've been meeting with other entities out there that are willing to help out in the state of Minnesota, like you said, Walts, Flanagan, they all want to help, Red Lake, Leech Lake, talk to Chairman Jackson, you know, we're all on board, and we're all trying to, to find out what, what would be the best solution for all of us across the, you know, urban and our reservation, you know, and I think those are things that we're looking at now, is we're looking at the, the new homeless shelter in Leech Lake that was just opened its doors this fall. So I think those are things where Ben Bement is looking at, and, you know, we're looking at Martha and looking at, you know, how can we get these wraparounds, you know, our, our return on investment, if we're going to invest in stuff into, you know, bricks and mortar, you know, in our wraparound services, where are we going to come back around and how are we going to be self-sustaining of these programs? And I think this is the stuff that we, we've been looking at, we've been reviewing, and I, and I think that, you know, I'm not sure if, if we, do we have a resolution for today? But I think that humanitarian package is probably a pretty good deal for all of us for, for this year, but I know that we're going to have to, we're going to have to really plan and, and meet and, and get, get things done for our people, because, you know, I got, we all got family that's homeless, you know, I got a brother living up, sleeping on someone's couch in, I don't know, Red Lake, I think, you know, that's how, that's how I look at it, it's like, you know, we all have somebody here that's, that's not, that's not doing too good, you know, so, you know, and it frightens us that, you know, we don't want everyone to get the call in the morning or in, in the afternoon that we, that we lose somebody that we love so much, you know, so this is why, you know, I'm, I'm very kind of adamant about this, this whole homelessness is like, we need to, we need to start doing something, you know, so. Migwich, and I think we're looking for our, our resolution for this, and I think it was, so. Yeah, and Raymond, Raymond, like to say a few words. Migwich.
Thank you, Chair. You know, since they put me in charge on the homeless committee here, you know, this has been quite a task. You know, I'm, I'm, what really surprises me is why hasn't these past councils dealt with this, when they knew it was out there? Why, I don't know, but I'm not laying blame on anybody, all I'm saying is that it's, maybe it could have been dealt with before, but today, I am very glad to say that our council here is working on this. It may look like a Band-Aid right now, but as we move on, our, our main priority is our, our own people, our own White Earth people. Now, you've seen these other ones open up different places over here, different places over there, but they have taken public money, which means that they have to open us up to not only their people, but other people, other nationalities. Well, this is not what we're looking for. We are looking for is opening our own White Earth so that we can only attend to our White Earth people. And again, I said, as I said, I'm not, we're not biased as to letting in other people, but we've got other people coming in with proposals to us now and asking us they want to be a part of this and be a part of that. Well, when they, when they did it, they never come to us. We would have probably jumped on board. To me, it looked as though they were, wanted to do what they want, and I know they were, they were doing good for their own people, but now, they have to open up their homeless shelters to other nationalities beside their own people. Well, I guess we have kind of learned from their mistakes is that we want to start our own homeless shelter run by White Earth, run by our White Earth people, for our White Earth people. And it might take us a little time, but like I said, this council right here is very cooperative with us. As I said, our, our chairman and our Secretary of Treasury and our, our rest of our board members have been attending meetings with the mayor of Minneapolis, we have been working with them, and getting this red tape cut. I, I never really realized how much red tape there was to get through and how many different types of programs there were for homelesses. There's a warming, a warming shelter that we're looking at right now, but there's also other ones in there. I just received an email from the Guineas Cities about our sprinkler system in order to get our, our mansions up to play, up to, up to par for overnight staying. We have to get sprinkler systems in there. It's going to take a little bit of work to get things done, but eventually, we will get to that point. I know it looks like a Band-Aid right now, but we are working diligently, finding money, getting things done. So I'm Migwich, I say Migwich to everybody who's helping out in this, including our urban council. They bring a lot of, like they said, they, they are now up to, up here to give us, and I, I enjoy their report because of the fact that we don't live down there, we don't really see what goes on, but yet they heard it, they just give us a very good explanation of what they see. So I say Migwich to you all, and bear with us, and we will get this going, and we will get it up and going. Migwich.
Thank you, Raymond.
In closing, I just want to make sure that we all understand that this Band-Aid fix, we all know, every wound starts out with a Band-Aid, and now that we're aware of it, there will be ongoing, long-term solutions. Those proposals will be coming in in the next couple Those proposals will be coming in, in the next couple of weeks for the long-term stuff. So I hear a lot of Band-Aid. This is a Band-Aid, but this is emergent. So it's really important for us all to be aware that this Band-Aid fix, we all know, is short-term. And we are working long-term. Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging us and validating us. I really appreciate that. But I'm also speaking here and asking this question coming from a community individual, not somebody who is on a board or anything. And I shared a little bit, is just a little bit of what I see every day. So, and then the safety concerns. But one thing is that as all of us who can make things move forward and coming up with solutions, I am asking and requesting that we have community individuals sharing that same space of conversation and to help make some of these decisions of input. And it doesn't have to, well, ideally, somebody right off the streets, but somebody who's had that lived experience, but also finding other ways of collecting that documentation or those stories, besides just saying, okay, we'll develop a focus group here in a building, or actually building relationships with the people who are living on the streets and then having someone bring it back to the table. We can't just have one perspective.
Can I address? I just wanted to, and this is probably jumping the gun, but just to ease everything, is it's really important to do needs assessments. And what will be happening is community meetings, urban meetings, and I'm probably speaking without getting permission from my supervisor. But it's really important, and I agree, that we do need needs assessments. And with them, needs assessments, they'll be publicized. People will be able to come in, in each community and talk about what is needed, what is wanted, what can we do about it? Because like you, I agree, we're a community and I don't think in the past we've acted as such. But we're a community of people and we need everybody's input in a respectful manner and not with a lot of negativity. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. I think Ben's going to talk about some of the projects that he's going to move forward on.
Yes, sir. It's really nice to see everybody so passionate about the homeless. It's something that I've been passionate about for many years now. As Human Services, we started off about 20 years ago with a little $5,000 grant. That's all we had to help out with a little bit of subsidy, some utility hookups and stuff like that. Not all the time has monies been available for tribal governments. A lot of times we see in federal grants and stuff like that, it doesn't say include tribes. It says nonprofits or county agencies and all this stuff. And I tell you, right now, there's one bill that Senator Tina Smith is pushing forward that I would really encourage her to keep moving it forward. And if you can, do the same. It's to help tribal governments to be able to get HUD funding that is put through the continuum of cares that has not been eligible, tribes have not been eligible for. So all these other county agencies out here and nonprofits and stuff like that can get these monies, but tribal governments can't. And that would be a big step forward to see tribes to be continued, be considered their own continuum of care and to be able to go after these monies. So I said, encourage Senator Smith to move forward on that. I'm dealing with a little bit of allergies, so I'm really dry today, sorry. We have several things that we're looking at right now. And you talk about the long-term solution. And currently, with our representative here, we're working on a 10-year homeless plan. Our last 10-year homeless plan is about eight years in service right now. We've completed majority of it. Some of the stuff that we dreamt about back then aren't possible today. So we need a new one. Because that's our roadmap to say, how are we going to address? How are we going to handle the homeless situation, stuff like that? White earth, our native people have the biggest disparity of homelessness in Minnesota. To all minority groups, all different counties, Native Americans have the biggest disparity. And not all the time is there's money, like I said, monies available. We fought in the last few years to get Minnesota Housing Finance Agency money, DHS money. We're finally eligible for a long-term homeless money. We're finally eligible for FHPAP. We're now able to help with preventative services. I sign off in checks all the time to help people get caught up on their rent or get into a new place to live. But we don't have a lot of places here. We need more housing stock. We don't have a number of places that people can move. So a lot of our people are forced to move Detroit Lakes or outside communities, but they want to live here. So we're working on several initiatives and several different projects to help address that. I am really glad that the council has looked, looking into the shelter because that's something that I've been preaching for years and we have not been able to obtain. And now, through their generosity and kindness, we're able to look forward to that. So I'm very excited about that. I have a resolution in hand up here to talk about how we can get this done. It's going to take a collaboration, that's the big thing. It's not just Human Services, it's all these different divisions that need to work together to make it possible. And once we do that, then we can start serving our people. Because like was said, 32 to 34% of our people are homeless on the reservation. So if we roughly have 5,200 members, that's over 1,600 homeless individuals. And we see them in our houses all the time. And don't think of them as homeless. Those are the people that are staying, even our kids or maybe an aunt and uncle or whatever, staying in there. And I've seen households, 12, 18 people living in a little bitty house. And problems come with that. And we really need to have people have their own home. Because one of the things I preached for years, in order for somebody to move forward with self-esteem, Maslow's Pyramid of Hierarchy, you need to have a place to live. You need to have food. Without those basic needs being met, you can't build self-esteem, you can't build self-worth, you can't get a job. It's really hard. And a lot of our people are facing that. And the drug problem just compounds with that. Yes, sir.
Just wondering what the numbers look like for homelessness in the urban community? Do we have the numbers for white earth members and then also on red?
Right. So there is not an exact number. I, please, the urban community, correct me, but I've heard 3,700 homeless members of white earths? Just in the metro area? It could be a lot higher?
Well, the numbers that were given out yesterday, there's 1,600 that are homeless. But I don't know whether we got their numbers. I think it's like triple that number.
Right. That's why I said, 3,700 seem to be just white earth. I mean, our native people, I should say.
Exactly.
It wasn't just white earth.
And we have approximately 13,000 members that live in the metro area from white earth.
So there you go. It's back to that 30-some percent.
Right.
Of our people are homeless. And you don't find them on the streets.
Exactly.
You find them in our homes. That's one thing, you know, proud about our people is we don't kick them out. We have them in our homes. There is a few people that live on the streets and most, you know, hate to say, but a lot of that is because, you know, the drug epidemic. It makes it very hard. So I have a couple of proposals today. One is for the homeless shelter that is resolution for. And another one that's, we've been working with the council on for some time. And it's, you know, it's something that we need to look into and see as possible. I know some other Native American communities have built what they call tiny homes. Smaller than average home. Get the cost rate of this project down so it's not, because to build a regular house is a lot of money. And if I went to Dynamic Homes today and said, build me a home, it'll be like 50-some thousand dollars to build a 14 by 46 unit. And then about another 40,000 dollars to put it on the foundation and all this kind of stuff for them to do it. And we're looking at 100,000 dollars per unit. So what I want to explore, and this is through the Tiny Home Initiative, is to look at, we have the Workforce Development Center out there. It has a good-sized barn out there. 14-some-foot door, 28-some-foot wide, in a nice controlled environment. Why can't we build it ourselves? Use our own labor pool? And also use training opportunities through the Workforce Development to teach our people some of these carpentry, plumbing, all those kinds of skills. Build these units for probably way less than half of what it would cost. So I'm looking at seeing, let's explore this, let's check it out, see what the feasibility of it is. And if it's feasible, let's give it a try. Because I can then go to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency and say, hey, look what we done. Fund us. Let's build 20 of these or 30 of these on our reservation. Yes, ma'am?
I love what you're saying. I've seen the progress on reservations. I will be stay on the Blue Ray Indian Reservation. I saw this problem too, so I built my own tiny house to see if I could actually live in it and be happy in it. And how could I make it cost affordable for utilities? Because I want to duplicate this around the country. I would love to contribute what I see as the problems and what I can do to make it almost perfect, where you can have a tiny house with almost zero utility bills. It's real excited, it's real simple. I loved what you said this morning. What's your name? Bill? Thank you for sharing that. Because quality housing versus cheap slap-it-up, quick housing is a nightmare. And I loved what you said because, you know, the poorest of the poor deserve good housing, quality housing, that they have almost zero utility bills for. And you're right. You can build it at a fraction of the cost. I love the idea about an apprenticeship. We need skilled labor people. We have a strong shortage of these skills all across the nation. Plumbers, electricians, solar. Want to know how you get your utility cost almost zero? You go solar. And there's a way to do that. I would love to contribute my failures and my successes and how to build these smaller houses. And they don't have to be a trailer house, they don't have to be a mobile home. I actually built a luxury tiny house for a very minimal amount of money. And you can build a super-quality house that's not going to fall apart, that's affordable, that is functional, awesome to live in, that people are going to be happy in. And I agree, there's the drug and the mental illness is a separate issue, but I believe I have ideas that I can contribute.
I greatly appreciate that. Because that's a lot of the conversations we've had about, you know, people live in trailer houses on the reservation. There are not very thick walls. They complain about the utility bills, how much they cost. And if we could explore the possibility of having a home that was well-insulated, that was practical, that we could do, that would be great. Yes? Yes? I don't know. You posed tough questions in the past, so.
Okay, so just help clarify and help me understand more. And so if your resolution is passed, will we be able to ask for financial help for our urban members? And are we able to help our homeless population that does not have a substance problem with this humanitarian funding? I think that's a question for you guys, but.
Certainly.
So I, yeah, because it, you know, to me, I'm asking this both questions because, yeah, we all work together and we all, you know, the flow together and a collaboration.
And the possibilities of how much we can do and what we can accomplish is part of that 10-year homeless plan. I really believe maybe the metro area needs a 10-year homeless plan also. And that we can have something tailor-made specifically. Because part of the thing is, what we look at housing up here is spread out. When you look in the metro, it's up. Because you don't have the room to spread out and go, you know, across the places. It's a little different situation. I'll tell you, right now, though, we built Dreamcatcher Homes about 12 years ago. The occupancy, we're at 98% occupancy rate, which is unheard of for supportive housing. We're well-known across the nation for the services we provide and how we've done that. We copied that again with Gwana Comin', another great supportive housing project. We're currently working on, just got awarded funding for, 24 units of Housing First model in Menoman here. That's efficiency apartments for single individuals. And we, Housing First model means you take them as they are. They come in, you don't worry about what's their track record and all this kind of stuff, whether they're using, because it's shown in the Housing First model, if you have them in housing for a year, they have an 80% chance of being sober. So, yes, why can't we do that? Why can't we work with some of the projects down there? I mean, I hear all the time that South Minneapolis is being built up by developers coming in and pushing our people out. Getting these rentals that are, you know, 1,800, 2,000 dollars a month and our people can't afford it. And so we're getting pushed out of South Minneapolis. And people are saying, go more, move north, where South Minneapolis has been where our people have been. I met with you guys, I've heard that. And why can't we work with an agency down there and do some supportive housing or do some development? I'm not a person to talk to about fair market, where you're going to be putting up market-rate apartments for people like that. We're on the service end of it. We're more about how we can help our people. And I'm a big, strong believer in supportive housing. And I see this opportunity for this shelter, for single individuals, because it's going to take us a year or so to build this supportive housing in Menoman. But it gives a chance for emergency shelter, get stabilized. And then maybe these people can transfer into, transition into a supportive housing type of situation or homeownership on their. It's a stepping stone that we can work on. I think it's great stuff that are coming through, but it is exactly, it's all of us together. It's not just one program or one department. It's the people we need. Like what she said back there, I've learned from these things. I made mistakes. So what can we do to do this forward? So like I said, I'm excited about it. Any other questions on homelessness? Yes, sir?
Okay, so I asked about the numbers of homelessness in white earth. I'm wondering about these boarded-up houses that we have all over the reservation. What's the reason that they're boarded up? How much money is housing getting every year for these boarded-up houses? Because we're talking about building more houses, which is a really good idea. But I believe that we have houses that are not, that they don't have anybody in them right now. They're boarded up. I'd like to know what reason they're boarded up? And can we work on getting people into these boarded-up houses? Before we start building more houses for people that are going to be boarded up?
I understand, however, I would have to turn to the council to answer that question because I don't work for the Housing Authority. And those are, you need housing stock, so I have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, so what we'll do is I will take your question there, Doug, and I'll send it over to the Housing Authority and ask that, I'll say that is, you have a question from constituent that I would like to answer. So I'll put it on White Earth Letterhead and send it over and we'll just roll it up in my report for next month. Okay?
Out of 400 and some homes, there is 132 that are on eviction list. By the time they, you know, three years is too long. One year is too long. You know, they should be able to fix these houses. But when you start realizing that the copper has been stolen up. Not only that, the stoves and fridges and everything else. And why aren't our people dailighed? It's dailighed out. They see them taking the stuff right out of there. Taking out the water heater, taking out the, you know, but it just amazes me. So when you have one-fourth of people on eviction lists, it really makes, hits home hard.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. To answer his question, two years ago, at an RTC meeting right over there at the school, the college, I sat there and asked two of the housing directors. And I believe the first, like one quarterly meeting, I asked them how many houses were boarded up on the reservation. They said 35, 25 to 35. At the next meeting, I asked them, how many you got now? Have you been working on them? They had 50 boarded up. They had fifty boarded up. And I told them that was not reality, that, and I asked for both their resignations at that time. And they both resigned. We got another housing manager, Ellen came on board. I remember meeting in Whiterth, I believe it was, that you asked for the resignation of that housing director. And the reason it is, you, they hire people that are not qualified to do their job, or they refuse to do their job. In Pine Point, the houses you're talking about, down there with the mold? They hired a, um, inspector. He lived in Detroit Lakes, we never seen him. He didn't come out and do his job. They, they, a house had burned down, they built a brand-new, um, dynamic home there. He wasn't there ninety percent of the time. He lived in Detroit Lakes, but he had that house there, and he was supposed to be inspecting those houses when they were doing mold remediation. They didn't do it. That's why we have the problem we have. Right now, I asked the same question. Our new housing director, they have come down, they have cut empty houses boarded up fifty percent. In the last, we've got a new person doing inspections, we've got a new person doing, um, building repairs, fixing. And the other question was, Kathy brought up, these houses that are, they can build a house on Friday, finish it up on Friday, and they come back Monday, the wiring stripped out of it, stuff was stolen out of it. And I asked them at that last meeting, I believe it was in, was it Whiterth? I asked the housing directors, they were both there, at our elders' meeting. I said, and that was their thing, uh, Natawash, I believe it was. And I asked the two of them, I said, "Mike, how can we solve this problem?" "Well, we've got a thing, we've gotta have people qualified to move in these houses. We've gotta do an, and background checks." Simple solution, do the background check before you finish a house, don't do it after you finish a house. And they said, "Well, that's a good idea." And that's what we need to do. When that house is done on a Friday, have somebody ready to move in there. And actually, they could be moving in two or three days before that, and you won't have this problem. They're rebuilding houses two or three times. That's where our money is going. And like you say, Kathy, everybody knows who's tearing them up and stuff, and they refuse to do anything. Which brings up another scenario. Um, Mike and I and Tito at our elders' council, we talked about our biggest problem. Mike, you know what the biggest problem is in, in Whiterth? Congregate housing, a facility run by D.W. Jones Management. I was told they weren't gonna get their contract renewed. I'm hoping that's true. I went up there to eat dinner yesterday, the front door has got a piece of plywood over it. Jeez, what happened there? Oh, some young person come in and kicked the door open, kicked the glass out the door so they could get in to buy drugs in a elderly housing unit. This is not the, I'm gonna throw this ball in your court, Mike, we talked about it, and there's reasons. That's not a solution to put young drug addicts and elders in the same building. It won't work. That's why you've got it.
And you know, that leads me to one of the, not working. That leads me to one of the things that was, that I'm gonna address today, too, because I've been asked to talk about management and management company, okay? So a little bit about is, there's, there's housing management concerns. So I've been asked to write a brief about the concerns with D.W. Jones property management, from the understanding that I've, uh, there has been several complaints about how they are managing the Whiterth properties. You know, Mike and I and a few others sat on a panel and have worked with some of the congress, addressed some of those pa, those issues in the past. Um, and I think, you know, there was some resolve. I'm willing to work with Mike and work with others, again, to address some of those issues, so that we can look at, you know, how to resolve the concerns that are in the tenants down there and stuff like that. So, because I'm not aware of the recent concerns that are going on right now. I just, you know, that's not part of the, the responsibility that falls underneath Human Services. But like I said, I'm willing to review that. Now, we've had D.W. Jones manage our properties with Dreamcatcher Homes and Gwana Command for multiple years now. And we've actually, our properties are well-managed. We, we have, um, great audits, we've never had a bad audit. We actually have money in reserves. Dreamcatcher Homes has a half a million dollars in reserves. That's rainy day fund, if the roof goes out or something like that, we have that built into that project. We collect rent. Like I said, we're ninety-eight percent occupancy, we're able to have the cash flow because we collect rent. And we have a great relationship with D.W. Jones, but there's a piece missing. We have service providers at Gwana Command and Dreamcatcher Homes that helps bridge that gap. What happens is you have somebody complaining because D.W. Jones did this, and they're over here, you know, um, over there just following in the rules. So we have a service provider that is in between there, that helps negotiate. Maybe it's vendor pay, maybe it's putting a no trespass order on a person. Because we, we do this all the time, we put no trespass orders on a person that shouldn't be there. That's coming over there, and, and shouldn't be there. We do it all the time at our properties. We're not without issues or problems, but we're there to be able to help deal with it. And that's one of the things I mentioned to the council is, I think we need a service provider, somebody there to help with those services, to help with that mediation, to be that in-between person, like a liaison or whatever, to help with that. And I think that would greatly help and benefit our properties. The other thing is, is there's a lot of complications to managing properties that doesn't always meet the eye. For Dreamcatcher Homes, it's tax credit. I know our Housing Authority has had problems with tax credit compliance. We've been doing great. Gwana Command has also state programs and stuff like that. We have to do audits and reporting and all that kind of stuff. The management companies are expert in that. However, I'm saying is, we should, somewhere along line, become our own property manager. We have over a hundred and some buildings, I believe, the tribal council oversees, that could be property managed. And, and why not start off with building a property management? Take that steps forward, and when we're capable, and we have those professional people in there, those auditors that know how to do this stuff, that people that are in the right position, that can do that, then have to take over our other properties and get rid of D.W. Jones. Because some of the things that I listed on here is, there's, there's, there's pros and cons. Some of the pros are, they are experts in the field, they know how to manage property. They manage eight hundred and some units. I mean, properties across the state of Minnesota. All they've been successful on, on our audits and our tax credit reporting, all that kind of stuff. Um, they offer a little bit of a separation between the tribal and, and our programs. And, and they can make the hard decisions. So they've been very valuable, but however, they're not cheap. They charge money. I mean, they charge us whenever a unit's rented. If it's not rented, they don't charge us anything, but they take a portion of that money. They're not locally owned. They live, they're loaned out in Walker. Nice to have something locally here. Um, and I, bottom line, I, we should have our own management company.
Ben, we're gonna probably go move forward with some stuff, and, you know, I think those questions that we can still answer, because the food's been sitting back there for a while, and, uh...
I, I just want, to the lady over here that talked about building these small houses. Whiterth had a program like that. They built single-unit houses for elders. We've got one in Pine Point.
And that, and that's one of the resolutions we're gonna try to pass right now, to have Ben look at that. You know, we're looking at all the options of, you know, using our workforce center. We have the garages that are big enough to build small homes in there. So we're gonna look at, you know, engineers, architects, you know. So we're gonna, we're gonna vote on some of this.
They were done at one time, they were built. Kathy, you know where there's one south of Natawash? It's been sitting empty for how many years?
Right, and, um, I did speak with Kath on that. And right now it's in probate court, or would have been pulled.
We had two or three in Pine Point.
And it's tribal land, you know, to me, it's something we should be taking back.
And the one in Pine Point is not live, being utilized by a native elder.
Right, no, that's...
There's a non-native elder living in it.
That's not right.
Um, if the problem you got with those buildings is, these people are, elders die. And when those elders die, it's not offered to another elder, it's offered to whoever. And that ain't the way it should be. So, I'll, I'll let you guys have dinner. Thank you.
I'm the one that, I'm the one that brought up, um, for management. I believe that we have our own people that can do the job a lot cheaper and take care of our people. I had an elder that got kicked out of a unit. Because when she was seventeen, and she's old as me, you know, she's pushing seventy. She did, she had a felony. No, that was a long time ago, you know. What, why aren't we paying our own people instead of some non-Indians? So I'm the one that did that, that brought that up.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, we're gonna take a vote on these three resolutions, uh...
I just, I just wanted to just clarify this, that what's happening, that we're, we're, we're talking about building more houses. All right, but there's gonna be copper and wiring in those houses also. I just wanted to clarify that. We have these houses sitting there boarded up because people are stealing the copper and wire out of there. So instead of working on those, which, housing, I understand, we get money every year to remodel these houses, but they're boarded up. And I don't know how many, I heard a hundred and thirty-one evicted, on the eviction list, but I didn't hear how many are, are like opened up with nobody living there. But we're talking about building more that's gonna have copper and wiring in those also, if I'm right. I just want to clarify that.
To clarify, so these, these tiny homes are, are not managed by Whiterth Housing Authority. Okay, so this is a different, a different project, a different funding pool than what you're describing. You do raise valid concerns that if you're gonna construct new facilities, you might want to be on the watch for people trying to steal stuff out of these new facilities. Yes, that is a valid concern. Um, but these are, these would not be managed by Whiterth Housing Authority. These would be managed by, um, one of our programs, which is a, which is a different entity. Those are valid concerns, though.
I understand, I understand. And I, I'm just saying, for the sake of homelessness, we have people homeless, and we have houses open right now that just need a little bit of renovation. Instead of waiting on the feasibility study and how we're gonna set up building more homes, a way to address it now would be...
Yes, so as part of the longer-term initiative that, that was discussed earlier, is that, um, we have to, we have funds available to address this homelessness issue, right? We do, okay? But the problem statement is, is for those housing homes, those are, those are actually HUDH homes, okay? You might call them tribal housing, but they're still HUDH homes. And so if we pour our money into those projects, then that's basically giving money to HUDH, okay? Rather than our own facilities. And so I think it'd be wiser for us to ask HUDH to pitch in more funds to fix up the homes that are on those books that are bad. And so those are very, very valid concerns that you bring up.
Uh, Mr. Chair, please. I am, I'm going to offer a solution to, uh, the copper situation and the stoves that have been taken out of those homes that, uh, why aren't we hiring tribal members to, uh, police the communities? Not, not that you have to be, uh, post-certified, but years ago, sixty, seventy years ago, here on Whiterth, we had constables who policed our communities and responded to bar fights or whatever. I'm not asking that they do that, I'm asking that, uh, if HUDH has to pitch in to, uh, pay individuals in our communities to police those homes, so that's, those thefts are not going on while we get people into those homes. I mean, that's, that's just my solution to the problem. Thank you.
Mine too.
Thank you, Leonard.
We had, um, Housing did have a guy that worked for Natawash, I know.
Yeah, and I know over on Leech Lake that they do have, like, building security and they, you know, there's multiple of them that cruise around during the, during the nighttime to double-check on all the buildings and, of course, houses. You know, I think these are some solutions that we're gonna be looking at. You know, I know that, you know, we're approving funds to move forward on helping the homeless. And so this is something that we're gonna go right, we're gonna go with right now. And I think the first solution comes from Ben Baman, from the, the Health and Human Services, uh, Human Services, uh, Division is on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar for, applies money to, for the homeless shelter. So do we have a motion for that? Motion by Alan, second by Kathy, all in favor? Motion carries. The second one is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the Tiny Homes project, I do believe. And this is from Ben Baman, from Human Services Department, too. So I guess do we get a motion on that one? Motion by Ray, second? Second by Kathy, all in favor? Motion carries. The last one is the, the, is this the, the, the Urban? The Urban, the Urban, uh, the Human, Hum- Humanitarian Fund of one million dollars. Motion by Kathy, second? Second by Ray, all in favor? Motion carries. Let's have lunch, so. We sit in, we'll go on break for a little bit.